Welcome to the January 16, 2018 study session for the Hoopa Unified School District Board of Education. Roll call, please. Here.
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 Thank you. At this moment, at this time, I'd like to ask if there are any public verbal comments from anyone in the audience. Seeing none, okay, we'll go ahead and go on to our only item, I believe. Dr. Hanson, the discussion of the potential 2018 general obligation bond.
Thank you. So tonight, I just wanted to spend a little bit of time to share with you some background information and some of the details that are needed in order to, for you as a board, to determine if you would like to place a general obligation bond on either the June or November ballot. So the presentation tonight is centered around information to be able, so that you can consider your options and recognize what the process entails. To start off, first of all, it's important to note all of the many projects that have taken place since the passage of Measure EE in 2014. As a reminder, that bond measure, the primary focus was four areas. To look at the technology, instructional technology, infrastructure in the classroom, student technology, in order to best serve the student needs at this time. Safety and security was a high priority. We went out for the previous bond. One of the main areas of focus was to create single points of entry to many of our campuses, to all of our campuses, to help improve the safety and security at our campuses. We've done that since then. In technology, we've created the Innovation Center, which I think you've had a part to be able to see that in person. Multiple STEM classrooms or rooms to support the STEM programs in our district. Every student has been issued a Chromebook to help with their technology development and integration in their day-to-day curriculum. And we've also had network upgrades at all of our school campuses in order to support the technology needs that exist. By way of safety and security, single points of entry has been the primary focus, and we've nearly accomplished that at all of our schools. In fact, over Christmas break, we were able to relocate one of the portables that sat in front of Hoopa Middle School that was unsecure, wasn't behind fencing or anything. And during the three-week process or three-week break, we relocated that onto campus so that it's completely secure within the campus. We've modified many of the gates and fencing around our schools to try and create that single point of entry as much as possible. As well as the redesign of some of the schools and the projects that we are currently working on brings a lot of those facilities or that single point of entry to the front of the campus and allows for common areas to be accessed only through the office to help improve with that measure as well. We've put on panic hardware on multiple gates, ADA compliance upgrades on multiple sites. As many of you are aware, whenever we touch a school site with construction, we're required to bring it up to code, at least in the area that is being addressed, which we've done on all of the school sites that we are under construction in, as well as some others based on previous projects. Upgraded fire safety equipment, asbestos abatement has taken place as well in some of our school sites. Modernization was a big part of the first bond or Measure EE. I guess it wasn't our first bond, but our previous bond. Modernization of campuses, specifically those campuses that were 25 years or older from their previous modernization. So schools that qualified for modernization dollars from the state. Schools that qualify are any school over 25 years old or had not been modernized or addressed in 25 years or more. So all of the schools that we have in the project list now are schools that qualify for modernization dollars. We've also included many energy-efficient features at our schools. We've tapped into Prop 39 dollars and utilized some Measure EE dollars to help extend that energy efficiency program at our schools. We've brought our administration buildings and our libraries and our NPRs to the front of our campuses so that they present themselves more of community centers for our neighborhoods. And there's opportunities for parents to come onto campuses and utilize those facilities without having to travel and move about on campus, trying to keep those facilities that are commonly used by our community and our parents at the front of the campus in one location. We've done a lot of maker spaces at various campuses. They're also included in some of the modernization projects that we're currently doing at this time. And every school, I think it's safe to say that every school has been touched somehow with Measure EE dollars, which is a big feat. Even those schools like the Patriot High School, who don't necessarily qualify for modernization dollars, received a large chunk of Measure EE dollars to help with the network upgrades. So technology, security, playgrounds that have been installed. Every school has been touched by Measure EE, which is really important and for the community to know that everybody's taxes contributes to their local school, has contributed to their local school. So as we start this process, obviously, when we move forward in possibly going after another general obligation bond, it's really important that we educate the community on those projects and everything that has been done so far with the dollars that they've contributed through their taxes. And that would be a major part of the campaign and as part of the education process to the community to show where their dollars are being spent currently and obviously how we plan to spend those dollars in the future. Some of the possible projects that a general obligation bond could go to support primarily focus on student programs and the arts, physical education, extracurricular activities. Those programs would be greatly affected by this general obligation bond. The previous bond, obviously, was to focus primarily on modernizing our old schools and to bringing them up to code and to provide those facilities for students. And so a lot of these areas that we're going to talk about tonight were not part of the Measure EE bond. It's not feasible to be able to reach this far with those dollars to be able to address these needs. So some of the potential projects coming from this bond, or if the board decides to move in that direction. Patriot High School, the stadium, I know that that's something we hear often about. There's no stadium at Patriot High School. They currently share Rubito High School for their home football games and athletic events. There's no pool there. We currently are utilizing the Cove that crosses the street from Patriot High School and pay a significant amount of money to support that facility. Theater modifications, there are some needs, even though that school's about 10 years old now. There are some needs in the theater to improve the acoustics and to make some modifications there. It could include other things like weight room equipment and other things that would support our physical education programs and student learning for our students at Patriot High School in those areas. At Rubito High School, a concert hall would be one of the priorities. Right now, they don't have a theater nor of any kind. They use the gym. The school was built in 1959, so the gym back in those days, actually, was an outdoor amphitheater. So the back portion of the gym used to open up, and there was an outdoor stage, and it was intended that kids would sit out in that area and there'd be outdoor performances. Those doors have long been welded shut and secure to help secure that facility, the gym. So theater and concert, or choir and band, a lot of those things take place in the gym, which is not a suitable space for the performing arts. And so we have architects currently looking at what it would take to build a concert hall at Rubito High School. As you're also aware, the music program at Pacific Avenue Academy Music at the middle school and feeding into Rubito High School is a high priority, and we are supporting those programs as well. This would provide an opportunity for those kids to grow into a facility that would support their learning and participation in those types of programs. Field and track replacement, both Rubito and Patriot has a track, an all-weather track. Those schools, the track in the field at Rubito High School are over 10 years old now. And if you've been there, you see the wear and tear. In fact, over Christmas time, we got reports from Rubito High School that the track had been damaged. Almost the entire runway of the long jump runway had lifted off of the ground and folded up and tore and blew onto the field. The field is extremely matted down and, you know, it's very, very worn at this time. Patriot High School the same way. A lot of people use those tracks on the weekends and at night for various reasons, and so they get a lot of use. And so they're due for some renovation.
Dr. Hanson?
Yes.
So the track at Rubito, was that due to the weather or was that vandalism?
We think it's vandalism. That's how it came into us, as vandalism. There was, we had some windy days there, and the rubber is no longer, you know, connected. So the wind could have lifted it, but we're running it as vandalism. It looks like people yanked it all up.
Yeah.
At Hoopa Valley High School? Hoopa Valley High School is 29 years old. I know when we're on that campus, it's very well-built and it's a beautiful campus, but it's 29 years old, and it was due for modernization a few years ago. As you know, we're building the Innovation Center right now, and that qualifies for modernization dollars, as well as we submitted a grant for career and technical education dollars to support that project. However, the rest of the campus is still 29 years old, and the theater, the performing arts theater, is in dire need of some modernization, as well as some of the classrooms there. And so that would be a feasible project in this geo-bond campaign. Weight room and training room upgrades. You know, I was at Hoopa Valley, let's see, I started in 2002, and I was there for four or five years as a teacher. And during that time, the weight room was outside, behind a chain-link fence. Almost, we called it the prison yard. It was all outdoors, the equipment was outdoors underneath, you know, a shaded canopy. That since has been moved in, they've knocked out a couple walls and tried to create a space for their weight equipment, but they've never really had a space to house that equipment. The equipment is in pretty rough shape. Pool repairs and reconditioning, again, it's a 29-year-old school, so obviously, the pool has had some issues, and so that would be included as well or could be included in this process. And then finally, throughout the district, there was a time, I think I was talking to Mr. Elzig, and he said at one time, we had more than, 50% of our classrooms were in portable buildings. Portable classrooms were built for temporary purposes. Typically, they had a shelf life of about 20 to 25 years. We have portables in the district that are over 40 years old. And so this would be a valuable opportunity to be able to go through and get rid of those portable classrooms and start replacing them with permanent, solid foundation classrooms for our students. I think with our last count, we had over 100 of them in the district. So it's a big feat. More than likely, we wouldn't be able to cover it all. But we are going, as we go through some of our modernization projects, like in West Riverside, we are in that process of removing some of those portables and creating permanent classrooms. We're trying to do it as we go, but it's a big feat.
I have a question. When we finish the K-8, that's going to change some, it'll take some of the load off of
Sky.
Some of the elementary schools, so they won't need some of those portables. Is that a possibility that boundaries might be redrawn in some to alleviate trying to replace portables with permanent buildings? I mean, there are some areas that will not be able to be built up with more housing, but we haven't done a boundary change in several years, and is that something we might look at?
Right now, and I'll let Ms. Ford jump in if she wants, but I think right now, Sky Country is really the school that's affected by the K-8.
Right.
Very few other schools will be affected to the point where we would reduce portable classrooms.
Troth won't be, Troth won't pick up any of those?
It would be on an interdistrict transfer, but the primary affected area is going to be Sky Country. So those would be reduced. But we also brought in portables at Sky Country on an interim basis, so we leased them for just a couple years to get us to the K-8. So we're not gaining anything, we're just simply giving them back at the end of their term, once the school opens. So that issue will still exist throughout the district. There's a lot, and to be quite honest, I mean, it would be very costly. I think when I ran the numbers a few weeks ago, for 30 portable classrooms to be turned into permanent classrooms, we're looking at around 20 million. And so we have over 100 of them. So it'd really be, you know, through the process of modernizing schools and getting and building new classrooms during that time, and then strategically building classrooms at various sites to eliminate portables throughout the district, slowly but surely, we'd start that process.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the last one is always to set aside, we think it's fiscally prudent to set aside money for instructional technology in the future. We know how fast technology changes, and we know that if we were to go out for a general obligation bond, it would be wise to set aside, you know, like what we've done with Measure EE was $5 million in three segments, so at least $5 million for instructional technology in the future. So those would be options that you could consider as a board and some of the projects that we could accomplish. Estimated project costs with 8% escalation. Now, keep in mind, the industry is really hot right now, so we're paying premium for all of our projects. There's a lot of bonds sold or passed in 2016. The state, you know, the Prop 51 passed, although the governor hasn't issued a lot of bonds at the state level. We anticipate that with the new governor, those will be issued. And so the building industry is really hot right now, so we're paying a premium on all of our construction. So these costs, when looking at these projects and the costs that exist within these projects at about 8% escalation in the out-years, anywhere between 60 and 70 million to be able to accomplish some of these, accomplish the majority of these projects, it would require.
On the $5 million one-time contribution for instructional technology, that is not replacing the computers that the students have right now?
Chromebooks.
Chromebooks, oh, that could, okay.
It could very well be that. It really, whatever required at that time to improve instructional technology, it's kind of hard to say. I mean, if this bond, if we went forward and it passed, by the time we issued the money and by the time we did anything, it'd be like 2020. And at that point in time, you know, we don't know what the technology would be like at that point. But, so I think when we, if we, to move forward, it would be to package it as instructional technology support and then make a decision at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted, and then we budgeted three tranches total for technology. And time flies. We're kind of nearing the end of when the first tranche is, you know, in another year, a lot of the computers will be either obsolete or worn. So we need to continue to, whether we do it this way or not, I mean, that'll be something you consider later on, not even necessarily today. But anything we do in terms of finance really needs to take technology into account.
And we didn't set up anything to go past 2020 or four years?
It's 20, it's another six years. No, it'll go past 2020. I was thinking another six or seven, yeah, seven years.
So, Dr. Hanson, but I think maybe keeping it with this terminology gives us more flexibility. Maybe it wouldn't necessarily be Chromebooks, it could be something else.
Exactly. Not only does it give us flexibility, but it also appeals more to voters. You know, it's difficult to say we're going to, just like Measure EE, we had to be very, very clear on our messaging to the community that we weren't financing computers for long-term. That's why we set up the tranches. And so it's more appealing when we talk about instructional technology or technology to improve and support instruction rather than name devices in a bond measure.
We have Hoopa Valley High School, its technology has been bumped up, and then the K-8 is going to pick up on that, too. My concern is, will $5 million be enough to cover that? I mean, things are moving so fast in the technology. I mean, just what I see, and I'm not very smart in technology. But to me, it looks like it's moving so fast, is $5 million actually? It doesn't sound like very much.
No, and that's a good point. Like Ms. Ford pointed out, the current tranches will get us out into the 2022s, 2025s. This would basically extend that life for another five years. But as a board, if you'd like to direct more, I mean, you have the ability to do that. So I think what, as we get farther into the presentation, there'll be some other things you'll need to consider in terms of how we, you know, how you structure that and what is most appealing to the voter. You certainly could assess more if you'd like as well.
And we don't want to put too much on the public either and say, you know, we want it all now.
Right. And every time you put more towards technology in a tranche, you limit the construction dollars, right? So it's a give and take.
Also, when we went to the conference, I remember in the breakfast, Paula Ford, that we were there, they were talking about how, yes, we're innovating a lot of technology. However, these children at home don't have access to Wi-Fi, and we sometimes just don't think, it just kind of goes, you know, within our head. And we don't really think of, you know, these, some of our communities, our children here are living in very poor, you know, neighborhoods, and they don't have access to Wi-Fi. So when we talk about technology, and you know, as my colleagues here, we also have to be very mindful that, you know, they don't, why are we innovating and this and that? And then going back to, you know, the roots there in the community, in the streets, and they don't have access. They have to either go to the library, go to other facilities to obtain it. So that's also a good thing to be mindful when we talk about technology. Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of things. One is trustee charges. Certainly, you hit the nail on the head. You want to be very aware of what the taxpayer will really handle in terms of that. And also, trustee Ortega, you're right on the spot, too. We were very fortunate in that low-cost internet was available to most of our students, and a lot of them have purchased it. So we found that, you know, they are able to use it at home. Most of the things they're doing, they can take assignments home on their computers. So they're also capable of using this computer at home. The one thing we never know is where technology's going to end up. I mean, I was thinking, when we passed Measure EE, we weren't talking about buying 3D printers. And now, virtually every school is starting to put 3D printers in their media centers. Always changing and always ahead of us.
And I think those are all, did you have a question, Ms. Bradford? Go ahead.
Actually, I have several.
Okay.
You're using a word that I don't recognize, tranches. What is that?
Tranches are, they're short-term financing mechanisms that we've utilized for Chromebooks and for technology. So they're five-year terms. I mean, Rachel and Paula could probably explain it better than I can, but they're essentially short-term financing mechanisms to fund devices that have short-term so that we're not financing a computer over the 25-year lifespan of a general obligation bond. We issue those, and their term expires in five years.
Is it a security?
They're all securities.
Okay.
So they're all bonds, and Rachel will probably explain more, but basically, the maturity date is set at a small window, whereas we have maturity dates set out at 20 years, 25 years for the facility portions of the bonds. Anything that's issued that we use for the technology has a short, three-to-five-year maturity date.
Okay. And is it usually a dollar value within a range up to?
Yes.
Please.
Happy to be here today and supporting technical information. So when we issue bonds, they mature over a range of five. If we're in the EE financing, the maximum maturity or payment term happens at 25 years. And obviously, the community's input along mature, we can obviously acknowledge the technology forward in some of the different kinds of.
Sure.
So what we've done is, when we issue, for example, the last series, $17,000,700 EE, we make sure that above that 25-year maturity, we can use them on the earlier maturity in Paula and Trenton Hall, these directions have been up to extend us more than five years. And I want to say that we've limited it up to within three years of their repayment.
What kind of investors buy tranches?
So when it comes to the actual financing, that we want to, again, provide this technical information is that all of the bonds are issued in $5,000,000. So we're talking about making sure the bond is potential investor. When it comes to the short end of the maturity and just the general pool of investors interested in that, we see your e-cells investors, the moms and pops, that are interested in putting the investment in a secure investment, but at the same time, want to see the curve sooner. We also see that when it's short end of the maturity, are the investors to expect the interest rate to rise in the future? That they want to make sure that they get their dollars invested in the near future and what interest rates are higher than what they expect.
Do we get foreign investors?
I can certainly get e-cells information.
I'm just being nosey.
I cannot have that information.
Okay.
I know we are available, but I can't get that. But I don't recall that they want to see that.
I'd like to know who we owe money, to whom we owe money.
And just wanted to go on, to touch on that, these bonds are traded on a frequent basis. So the information I can obtain is to the investor who participated in that initial offering of the bond, but is they're traded?
Sure.
That information that owner.
You don't know? Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, back to my list, Dr. Hanson. What was the amount of Measure EE?
144 million.
Okay. And when it was being discussed in the community, what were the major objections or questions we needed to answer?
Really, what the project list was going to look like, we had to answer the question for technology, and that was the biggest concern with technology, is not financing long-term devices over the long term. But really, it just came down to educating on the projects, the needs that exist, and then gaining support for that.
So it sounds like you're saying that when people were assured that their money was being well-invested, they went for it?
Yeah.
Okay. When you say theater modernization, what does that include?
Well, it depends on which theater we're talking about.
JVHS?
Hoopa Valley. That could be, I mean, it's the seats, it's the sound booth, it's the stage, it's the curtains. It really depends on what we see when we get the engineers in there and what changes need to be made, acoustics, the panels. I mean, it's just, it's an old facility that needs some.
So deterioration is what you're talking about?
Yeah. And some of that, too, is driven by engineers and, you know, today's standard, today's code.
Sure. Technology, too. Okay. When you talk about weight and training room upgrades, how equitably are they used between boys and girls?
That I don't know. I mean, there are weight training classes at the high school that are open. It's a section of PE. And then obviously, the athletic departments use them, both female and male athletic programs. So in terms of a percentage, I wouldn't know that, but I know they're used by both genders.
Okay, good. Let's see. Is it a problem for the two high schools to share a stadium?
Depends on who you ask.
Oh, the host structure.
Let me partially answer and not answer that question. Because you're, one of the things that we would recommend, if you're all interested in pursuing this, is that the next step is to survey the community. And while we hear from individuals about high school fields and sharing things, the community really needs to be asked the same question as to how pressing of a question it is for them.
Okay.
So I think what's really important in any next step, all of these, are these issues important to you because they were not included as part of Measure EE? We thought there was going to be a lot more state money. There'd be some, even with the new governor, there won't be enough to do all of these. So what are the hot-button issues for you, and how supportive are you?
Okay. And let's see. My last question is... My last question is, I think of the stuff that I have on floppy disks that I'll never be able to access again, and I'm wondering, have you kept any old trash 80s to make sure you can access? Are you, or are we continually updating our records onto the current media? So you don't look at them like I do and say, what do I do with this? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just to reassure you, all of our mission-critical data are on duplicates and redundant systems in current media, backup-able, reusable, reclaimable. And I don't know if we're at a remote site right now, but there's also a lot of cloud-based data remote sites.
Good.
So anything that was on a trash 80 might have been something like my personal PFS file of a data sheet of a budget 25 years ago that we wouldn't use anyway.
Okay. It sounds like you've been listening to Leo Laporte.
Oh, no, but I just know that we-
Redundancy is good.
We have good data, people.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Henson, I had a couple of related questions in regards to some of the considerations that the community may need to be aware of in terms of the bonds, because it surfaced during the last time that this bond was, before the voters sent approved. One was the amount of debt that would be passed on from generation to generation, basically, or from one, you know, over such a long period of time. And how feasible was that for the community to be able to support that? And the second thing that was sort of related to that was the impact that it has on the cost of housing. And as we know, right now, we're in a housing crunch where it's really very difficult for anybody to, you know, afford a new home, basically anywhere in California. And so I don't know, those are considerations that we should expect the community to ask and for us to be able to provide appropriate responses to them, or how that was considered in light of, we vote with this?
Absolutely. And those are, that's included in the presentation. We get a little farther down, we'll talk a little bit about the tax rate, some of the options that are available, how it'd impact, you know, homeowners. And those are always questions that we have set up during the campaign, and as we educate the community to be able to answer those questions and provide that information to you as board members, so that you're able to answer those questions as well. So when we get to that slide, we'll be able to go into more detail on that structure, what it might-
Okay, thank you. And then just one last question. These measure double E funds, they were also able to be leveraged, weren't they, with other funding sources to maximize the impact that we could, you know, have in our classrooms and our schools by being able to do that? And if we didn't have measure E funds, double E funds, we may not have been able to take advantage of some of that. Is that correct?
That is correct. Anytime we want to leverage state dollars, we are required to have a local match with that. And that's what the local bond dollars are able to do, is to be able to match the state dollars, so that we can extend our dollars, so to speak, in the district and projects that we have in store.
Good, thank you.
I have one more question that kind of pertains to what he was saying. Do we know the percentage of homes in our district that are actually owned by our families? Because I know a lot of the area around Einarbuckle are, there's landlords, so they're outsiders, possibly from LA, because when they wanted to do the revitalization of Mission Boulevard, that was a big thing. They didn't want to pay the taxes to do that, because they lived in LA or somewhere else and didn't, you know, it wasn't really their concern, or they weren't going to benefit, or they didn't think they were going to benefit.
Right.
Well, if they're, I'll answer, sorry. If there's a parcel tax that they own property on, they pay, but they don't get to vote on this one. They're absent landlords. Only residents of the district can vote. Now, there is a question about, it could have an impact on renters.
Okay.
Technically. And those are the kinds of things we would analyze. Those are questions as also that, as we look at bond rates and things like that, the impact. I'm not sure I answered what you were asking, but-
I think you did. I think you did, because that was my concern. If there, if our people that are living in those homes want this, but they can't vote on it because they don't own the property, so that-
You don't have to own property to vote.
To vote. So they can vote it in, and then they'll have to-
Be a resident of the district and a registered voter.
Do we know, are there people who are not paying the taxes to, so that we're getting the money? I mean, the county goes after them, I understand that. But does that affect us, or does the county supplement what maybe is not being paid on property?
I think we have very low property tax, what's the word I want?
Defaults.
Defaults.
Okay.
And you actually get them and have to process on any CFDs.
Oh, okay.
So we get a fair idea. People usually, there's very few.
Well, that's good to know. Okay. Thank you.
So, and just as, oh, go ahead.
How much do you think it will cost to field a successful campaign?
In the past, it's been about $100,000. So just as a reminder, too, as we go through this presentation, this is, I want to try and give you all the information upfront. Once you make a decision, then obviously, we can get in more in the details, because then there's going to be a whole nother process of educating the community if it is determined to move forward. Before we do that, like Mr. Duchan alluded to, we have, we need to do, we need to poll the community. We need to do a feasibility study. We wouldn't want you to be in a position to place a bond on the ballot if the polls say that that's not something that the community is interested in. So this is really more of an overview of what to expect, and then when we make those decisions, the polling is really going to be the most important part. So just, the next couple of slides are just some examples of some of the aging facilities that exist out there. We have, obviously, the issues with our portables. Again, those were built to be temporary facilities, and most school districts use them as permanent classrooms. So to have the opportunity to go through and replace as many of those as we can with permanent structures would benefit our students throughout the district. These are just some pictures of Rupa Valley High School Theater and some of its current conditions. Again, that's a 29-year-old facility. This is an artist's rendering of what the facility could look like with some modernization on the exterior and on the interior of what that could look like with modernization to that facility. Rubito High School, again, this is an artist's rendering of a concert hall on Opal Street at Rubito High School to support the performing arts and some of the career and technical education pathways that exist in the music program and performing arts programs at Rubito High School, as well as support the strong music program at Pacific Avenue Academy of Music, Mission Middle School are moving into Rubito High School. These are some examples of some of the facilities at Patriot High School. Their track is about 10 years old now. You can see that the tar is wearing through, the rubberized surface. This is the track at, Rubito High School is, again, track and field, about 10 years old. And there was other areas that were worse off than that from the damage that was, that took place over Christmas break.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I have a question in terms of the situation that exists right now with some of these, some of these facilities. Are we at a point with some of these where it might be considered a hazard of some sort for students or staff or a community that may be using them at some time?
It's not a hazard at this point, but it's, you know, we've had to make repairs along the way to eliminate those hazards, but it's in a piecemeal type of process. We had some roots elevating up through the Patriot High School track. We had to go in and tear those trees out, tear the roots out underneath the ground, try and force those down so that, so that track would lay flat again. So there's, it's more like mitigation with those areas, so that there isn't safety issues.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm going to suggest in light of the time that maybe Dr. Henson moved to the rates, and then leave a couple of minutes, or if you want us to go out and do some type of survey.
Yeah, let's go to that trend. Okay, so you want to go to your summary of tax rate scenarios, and Rachel's here as well to answer questions if you have them. But this, this is an idea here of various scenarios that we could use or that could be used. So you have four different scenarios there. In the first column, you see your annual tax rate, that's per 100,000 of assessed valuation, $20, $22.75, $24.50, $26. Then what those tax rates will provide in terms of bond authorization. Then you have the amount for technology set aside, the total debt, so I think that was one of the questions that came up, with the total debt, debt service to the taxpayers, the ratio, how the structure will look in terms of current interest bonds or capital appreciation bonds. And then we broke it down into annual tax for, per average household, and also monthly tax per average household. And the assessed valuation right now in Rupa Valley is $208,533 per household. So if you have other questions, Rachel can step in.
Well, I got a question, Rachel. Just looking at scenario A and B versus C and D, the debt to service seems a lot lower at the, on C and D, well, lower, say lower. Is there a reason for that, or what's the reason for that?
Sure. So trustee Garcia, first of all, I'd like to just qualify that these are estimates based on certain interest rate assumptions, property tax base growth assumptions. So we want to continue the conservatism that we built into the vision program. So there's certain level of conservatism in all the numbers you're looking at here. And then to answer your question, the main reason that C and D seem to have a more compression rate even, right, is because with higher tax dollars, you have a faster payment of your financing. So those small differences, I would qualify as significant, but those are the things why you're paying down.
Any other questions for Rachel, or?
Again, when we do our, when we poll the community, that will also drive, you know, questions are in those surveys to kind of get a feel for what the community is willing to pay, what they're willing to support. And so those numbers could all fluctuate, but this, this gives you an idea at various increments of what we could expect. But that's all based on, you know, the polling data and research will kind of drive that as well.
Rachel? I missed, what are CIBs and CABs?
Of course. So those are estimates for CIBs, current interest bonds, and CABs, they're capital depreciation bonds. Those are commonly utilized financing instruments in school financing arena, and not to get into too much e-cells, but current interest bonds are similar to regular mortgage, that you pay the financing on a current basis for principal and interest. And capital appreciation bonds, you free your interest portion and repay the half period. And again, when it comes to that, that's a major percentage in current interest bonds versus capital appreciation bonds, this is a conservative one. I think just to put back, if planning on this from Measure EE, we saw similar information, but after that, any capital depreciation bond under Measure EE program, based on conservative development, as well as that, it creates a quality tax growth.
When would, when would you want to use one over the other?
So it's interesting that for each general location line, which is the state, in order to pass a bond with 55% of the overall threshold, there's a limitation to place on, so you can't have a category. So that, whether the location was category maximum, it's not a hundred thousand. So the more than eight that you can pay on the general basis, you may not have a real growth in your financial management. So you can count on the financing to be paid longer terms, rather than today or next year, sometimes having a few more dollars. We also have more, what we even question coming back to the dollars, it was a question earlier, that was, well, there was a year of cost to the year, under the downstate, is that construction partners, installations are, sometimes you can't find it, there's no starting law, so you're not, you're not.
Do construction companies that work for the schools or for the state doing schools, do they have a limit as to how much they can raise, they inflate their costs or not?
I will answer that. They can bid whatever they want, and the low bid gets the job.
Right, okay.
And once they get the bid, they can't raise their rates.
Okay, thank you.
We had that happen with Patriot. So I was going to make a suggestion in light of the time. At this point, really, there's no decision for the board. We would just need consensus if you would like us to move forward with a survey of the community, kind of find out what the interest is, and then come back to you. And maybe if there's some detailed questions about the nature of bonds and the types of financing and more details on the project, we could do that.
So, Mr. Duchan, so the survey would cover each of these scenarios, or would not necessarily?
Yeah, generally, what they do is they ask the type of question of, you know, what would it, you know, I can't, I'm not a professional, but they ask a question, kind of a sensitivity and threshold of people who are taxpayers, and if they're interested at all in supporting a bond, at what level they would be. Last time we did that, and we went, we actually bonded significantly lower than that amount. This is what you're being shown tonight is a very low amount, but it may be that the community does not have support for it, and it may be the community comes back and says, we want this and more. So I think it's prudent, whether you ultimately move forward with a bond on the ballot or not, to know what the feeling of the community is. It's been a few years, and we've completed a number of projects. It would be good to know where they stand.
How would this survey, survey go out to the public? Is it going out at the schools, having, what do we call them, the public?
No, generally, it's targeted, and they do samples of voters.
Okay.
I have a quick question. What's an example of a question that, you know, our community has asked? And is it A or B, or how, like, just the process? How does it, how does it work?
Choice, or what?
I don't know if I can remember back on the previous one, but, oh, go ahead, Rachel.
Yeah, I had the pleasure of working on some recently, the past November, so perhaps I can reply to any question. So as Mr. Coram mentioned, so the target audience is the sample that, so there's always likely voters within the school district when it comes to demographics, so on and so forth. And same time, there is a range of question, there are simple answers, that are, yes, there's no answer. There are choices in terms of, this is a project, a potential project, and that can be financed with a potential bond. How likely will you support it, rank it from one to five? And based on that, the percentage of support, the survey company, they're a professional staff will be able to conclude and statistics, and now sleep or it can be something else. There are also questions that have important causes, to see, will you support the bond at a property category of X dollars, Y dollars, Z dollars, so you can rank the percentages of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So, do we need a motion?
We think we just need consensus on whether we should go ahead and interact, the district to go ahead and- the district to go ahead and, and poll the community? Is that proper?
That's all we really need, is generally consensus and-
So do we have a consensus that, um?
I propose that we go ahead and, um, give them permission to feel out whether we can, this bond would go through, and what kind of support we're gonna have from the public.
I agree.
I'm interested in getting some really good, um, feedback from it, not just yes and no, but, um, a range of support. And I enthusiastically support it.
All right. Mrs. Ortega and Mr. Mamo, Mr. Mendez?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Henson. All right, uh, we'll adjourn that meeting and take a five-minute break if anybody needs to do that. Let's just take five minutes and, uh, we can, we can start, uh, the regular meeting.